All this meeting of Sylvania City Council for May 2, 2022 to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Hanem.
Here.
Mr. McCann.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Stow.
Here.
Mrs. Westphal.
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening. If there's a particular item you'd like to address council on when we get to on the agenda, please raise your hand and I'll recognize you at the right time. With that, I invite you to join us in our Pledge of Allegiance, this meeting led by Mr. Hanson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And item three is additions to the agenda for our guests. There were, I believe, agendas on the side table, but I don't see any now. Maybe you got them and maybe we didn't put them there. Any questions, let me know. I have no additions to the agenda. Mr. Frye.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Members of City Council. Mrs. Westphal.
Oh, yes, sorry, Mayor. I would like to add a committee report if possible, just to do a quick update on Sage Art.
We'll make that 10C Sage Art update. Any other items from members of City Council? Hearing none. Mr. Sanford. Chief Snore. Mr. Shoreer. Mr. Haller.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
And Mrs. Bryney.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our agenda for this evening is approved. And item four is approval of our meeting minutes from our last meeting on April 18. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move approval of the meeting minutes for the council meeting of April 18, 2022 as submitted.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from April 18, 2022 as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and those meeting minutes are approved. We are quickly up to agenda item five, and we are happy to welcome Andy Erbskorn of the Heritage Sylvania. Give us an update, and we'll have Lindsay Stow introduce her as City Council's representative to the Heritage Center Board.
Mr. Mayor, so Andy Erbskorn is the Executive Director of the Heritage Sylvania, and I have known her for about four or five years now. How long have you been the Executive Director now, Andy? All right, so about as long as I've known you. And we've been working on this plan that you are, Andy's about to present, for the last, I believe, six months. And it's been a collaboration with the numbers, and I don't want to take any of Andy's steam away from her, but Andy, I think, has been showing great leadership within the organization, and I have enjoyed working with her. So I'm excited that we can share this master plan with all of you. On up.
For that wonderful event. For Stow. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come back and do a few updates with you. I'm going to start with the not exciting part. I'm excited, but I wanted to give you a few updates. Things that I had mentioned. I was here, I think, August or September of last year. One of the things we had talked about was the Lathrip House. Where we mentioned we had a few issues when you deal with houses that are 60 years old. Lot of things. House last year. And I wanted to let you know that all of that work that we did last year paid off over the winter. Those of you who weren't here, we had to. Patient, had to seal up a lot of holes, a lot of remediation, a lot of animals that taken up residence there. This winter, we able to keep house. And without it. First time since. Happen. I'm also. We had no animal. Wonderful. And we also, this spring, just a week or so. Bye. Roof really does. I also came dressed in my work attire. For the first time in two years, I am. That we are booked to capacity with school. We are thrilled to welcome. I think it's interesting, I don't know if all of you know, I know a lot of. Sylvania students, which they do, love that. But I also wanted to let you know, over the last. We have welcomed every fourth grader from Ossean. Welcomed every second grader from Perrysburg. Plus schools from, other schools, county school, Michigan. Obviously, schools from Sylvania and to the public. This fall, we've entered into a partnership with Washington. As planned, welcoming every second. Through village and. So it's really exciting, that's my passion. Really exciting us to. And our education. Take you aware of that. Friday by any weekday, late Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. So, get those two things out of the way. Just as kind of a refresher. All, I came to you with this idea that we had to try to imagine our. We have a lot of beautiful green space back there, but some of it needs. One thing I think that. So we engaged. Mine and. Work with us. Mentioned we had a committee that helped us imagine or reimagine. We had some very. Oct, oct grader. One of those was to. Really let people know they were entering fighting. Wasn't just another house. I think as the long range. Did last year. Said, you know, it's very unique to have a. How could. Realize they were. Very special. We also wanted a way to. Is the museum. Garden. Which are nice areas, there are lots of people don't understand how they're all. Then also, we wanted to. How could. I like to say, we wanted to see if we could. While still being uniquely. We all know with a lot of the activity on downtown that we can use. Gathering. And. It. And just another park wasn't placed to park trucks. Reflecting not only Sylvania's. Really pleased with the progress or the process. Let me show you. And, ooh. There's a speaker somewhere. Stand down, there we go. I think that Tim really has created. I could use my teacher voice. Try that again. Keep talking, there, I think that's better. I think what Tim has created for us really addressed all of those issues. I want to say first and foremost that this is a vision. These are not schematic plans, this is not an engineered drawing. This is simply a vision, and it gives us a roadmap. The final project will probably look different, somewhat different. But this kind of gives us a dream, it gives us a destination for where we want to go. And so we really believe, as I said, that Tim helped us answer all of those questions. So I'm going to kind of walk through this with you. And I don't know if I'm in your way. We're going to start with my issue number one, which was how do we beef up the presence on Main Street? So that people really know, hey, we're entering someplace different. So you'll see, here's the Heritage Center Museum, the rental retail spot that's right next to us. And you're going to see here that we've created kind of that wonderful sort of nostalgic fencing. It'll be low as not to interfere with the architecture of the house. It will wrap a little bit around the side too, to kind of enclose the house a little bit. And enclosed is probably not the right word, but to ground the house. As I was saying, once the duplexes came down, we needed a way to kind of put the house back into its environment and give it a little bit more green space. That entry, then the main entry into the Heritage Sylvania complex is going to be between the museum and the retail space, which is what you're seeing here. Shoot. Touchscreen. Which is this pathway back. And there will be a, an arbor that kind of welcomes you in. This arbor, we're going to come back to, because this is one of our connecting points to connect the three areas. We also will have plantings, lights along the fence. So again, so you know that when you come upon this, you are entering someplace different. The other wonderful thing about reorienting our entry is it's going to lead your eye right back to the next big space. And this is where the current Sister City Garden resides. Plus, there's a gazebo there, there's a pergola there. The Sister City Garden will be moving up as part of this entryway. So the green space, the garden, the flowers will be along that pathway. And I imagine when you walk, it's going to look and smell good, especially in the springtime. And then it opens up into this event lawn. And it's this green space, there will be a pergola behind, which will be the same material and the same style as the arbor that welcomes you in. There will be a stage, there will be lighting, there will be electricity. We also are then on either side doing hard surface, something a little different than asphalt. We're not quite sure what that will be. But this will not be regular parking. There is about a space and a half there right now, if you've been back there. It will be used, it can be used for food trucks or, you know, set up for a craft show or something like that. But we really wanted to keep this open for potential for overflow. So if you were having an event here, you could be walking here, you could be on the other side. That will be, the fences are all gone. If you've been back to the Sister City Garden now, you know it's kind of a lot of fences. It will be an open area. The turf, we have in mind the same kind of turf that's at Hensville. That is that wonderful green, but holds up really, really well. And we really foresee this as an exciting spot. It can be used not only for our programming, but for the Red Bird, whether you want to have music back there, wine tasting back there. It can also be used if somebody wanted to rent it out for a small wedding or gathering as well. It could be used for the Fall Festival, for Maple and Maine, for Miracle on Main Street. It has multipurpose, and that's what we're really, really excited about. And we just think when you're walking along in that second block of Main Street, and there's something going on back here, it's going to catch your eye. Because you're going to see it, you're going to hear it, and there's going to be an energy back there. It will be adjacent to the Carriage House, which continues to be a programming spot for us. It belongs with the Heritage Center Museum as one of the historic buildings. But we're also going to create a sort of transition space. You'll see here, there's some green. Tim felt it was really kind of important with how busy this area is going to be with parking and traffic, that we create some kind of transition. So that people know you're leaving a more pedestrian area and entering an area that's going to have traffic. So that's why we have some green coming out and around. There will also be a pathway straight across for easy access. So if there is something going on here, you don't feel like, ooh, I'm going to walk right through the middle of it. You can, you know, cut across if you're cutting across to Element or back the other way towards inside the Vibe. This hard surface area, you can see, kind of continues around. That's one of our connector areas. See if I can do this this way then. And it helps connect and draws the eye back to the Historic Village. So that's another one of our connecting pieces, is this hard surfaced area. And then we come back here to the Historic Village. And then again, we're mimicking that trellis, that archway. Same material, same sort of style as the other two, again, that's our connector piece. And again, beefing up the entry to the Historic Village. So that people again know, hey, this is where it is. There's something back here. And then you're going to see, we didn't do as much back here physically or pretty. There's a lot of infrastructure that has to go on back here that we're going to address. So it'll be improved walkways, improved ramps, some improvements with the ground. But what's really exciting here is we're going to add some more trees. Again, to give you that sense, in this space, this is where we want to create that historic feel. That, that you're going a little bit back in time. Not stuffy, not old fashioned, but that you're entering someplace unique. So we're going to add more trees. But then, we have again another open lawn space. And you'll see, if you know the train car barn, we've expanded the pad that's there, which really isn't much other than a little cement pad, into a stage. And then you'll see there's a slightly different color green, it's kind of a more natural form. That is shown in green, it might turn out to be some kind of paver or hard material. But we really envision this as being kind of a continuation of this patio or stage. So it's really more like a porch or a pavilion kind of area. So we could do, you know, an event this way, but you could also do crafts, you could do another event along the long way. So it gives us a few more options. We'll also improve the lighting back there as well. We really kind of foresee this area is going to have like the tivali lights, the overhead lights. This area will have probably more lamp posts and lights on the buildings to add more light back here. In both spaces, we really see there will be some permanent furniture, and I don't mean in the ground, but I just mean you could always say, oh yeah, there's some tables and chairs back there. I'm going to grab my lunch to go at Chandler's, and it's a beautiful day, and I'm going to just sit and enjoy nature back here. Or, hey, let's have a quick meeting, there's tables back here. Let's grab, you know, luncheon inside the Vibe to go, and we'll come out here and have a meeting. So you'll always know that there are some kind of picnic tables or something back there as well. The wonderful thing about what Tim created for us is that it's a phased approach. There are two big phases. Phase one is the entry and the public space. Phase two would be the Historic Village. But within phase one, there are kind of many steps along the way. One of them I want to point out, if you're really paying attention, you're going to notice that the Sylvania Arts Commission building has moved. Flipping, kind of moved across the sidewalk. That could possibly be something that happens later down the road. But it would allow us to have a little more space here. But in all honesty, that building is so small, it doesn't take up a lot of space along the way. Numbers are here. You also all received a budget, as I mentioned, talk to you in the fall. We are fundraising for this. We, our hope is that we will completely fundraise for it. We are working with Brad Marketing, who is our marketing partner. They are creating, helping us create a fundraising campaign. I would love to have the money in hand tonight, but I don't. But Tim said even if we had the money in hand tonight, given the construction right now, we would not be breaking ground. So our hope is to. Begin to raise some money. Our goal would be to raise enough. Brad Marketing will serve, or not, Edge will serve as our. For us. They will help us with the bidding, help us with the permits. That would, our hope is to get those engineered. Then we can. But, have some questions, I'd be happy to answer. I always tell people, if I don't know the answer.
Start off, Andy. Oh, it's a very exciting plan, I think it's terrific. And your idea of giving more presence on Main Street is a very good one. Have you investigated with Tim how you interact with those two sites where the duplexes were and the new construction that's coming? Perhaps you can describe to us the theory that you've got there.
Well. Earlier on in the process. Well, just to let them know, as they're either side of. Our space, let them know what we were thinking about. What was really. Getting to talking. This. Talking about. Fencing. Frontage that were. Both organizations. That might be something that. That was, I'm not sure if that was what you.
It is. Your visibility went way up when those duplexes came down. It changed everybody's perception of what was there, but you're going to lose some of that visibility with their new construction.
We will, we will, but. We're hoping, that's why we're hoping. That added. That was one of our goals, and in. Honestly, when those duplexes. Down our house.
Thank you. Mrs. Westphal.
Thank you. Andy, I also think it looks fabulous, very exciting. And it feels, I'm sure to you, like a big bullet when you look at the dollar figure. But I really don't think it's that aggressive of a figure for you to raise. I'm wondering if you're looking at grants, opportunities, historic grants, and local foundations at all? And somebody that's got the experience to help guide you through that process a little bit? Oh, I, you said Brad, and maybe.
Brad Marketing.
I, I understood.
Brad Marketing is helping.
Oh, good, good.
Had Brad when. Personally, I understood. But then, how do you?
Well, Brad actually assisted you with cultivating the relationships and making the asks.
That's what. That we will have. We will have...
The many schoolchildren that you're welcoming are going to have a big impact on your fundraising ability, I think.
Especially when we go for... That's always a... For grants and for local foundations, I can... Griesberg and five hundred... If we go to... Oh, at the... Are also, there are... IMLs grants, hope...
I don't think it looks like a...
At... It won't hurt. Up into... About ninety-nine percent. He doesn't... Very confident, but... Office.
Andy, you mentioned phases to go through, and kind of starting at the entryway, I think is what you indicated, and then kind of moving backwards. Where, I see the museum center and community site, I see the Historic Village piece, so I'm assuming the back piece, which is the hundred and sixty-six grand, is the phase towards the back with the train car, or the train depot and the barn and all that stuff, correct?
Correct.
Right. And the other phase, so I kind of see two phases here. Is there a subset of the four hundred and ten that you're, or five hundred you're asking for here on the first page? Is there a subset there?
Yes. When we were talking, number, about five hundred thousand. We're talking, there are ways to get started. Garden might be part small.
So lots of organizations proceed with construction before they've raised all the money, even with commitments. What's your thought in that regard? If you get half of it raised, are you going to proceed? Or what's your and the board's thought process in that way?
This, out a month ago, our last...
Okay.
On the agenda.
Okay.
Got this just... One thing we did talk about... Part of that is the... Add amount.
And this amount is, that you're raising is above and beyond the existing budget structure, correct? Okay. Right.
Operations versus capital.
Yep.
All right, Andy, terrific presentation. Nice work.
And if you have questions, we'll back...
All right, with council's permission, and with the number of downtown business owners in the room, I would like to move committee reports at 10A and 10B forward. Committee Chairman, Mr. Richardson, has agreed to that, if it's all right with city council. So let's do that. Let's proceed with committee reports. First would be 10As. The Streets Committee report, Patrick, from your meeting on April 28th.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April 28th, at 8:00 AM, the Streets Committee met in council chambers to discuss proposed Ordinance 46-2022. And the meeting started with DGL introducing themselves and giving an overview of the other projects they've worked on in the area. And they then overviewed the fourteen hundred feet of Main Street to be rehabbed in this proposal here. But they stated they would consider design, parking, ADA requirements, and that Edge would provide concepts renderings, and JDRAM would provide engineering. Mr. Fry addressed the proposed scooter program and how it relates to the downtown plan. We then heard from Katie Capellini from Redbird, and she presented a proposal and discussed a vision for the streetscape that encompasses a larger area. And the committee agreed to advance the legislation to council, and we adjourned at 8:45.
Questions from city council. That moves us to Agenda Item 10B, which is Proposed Ordinance 46-2022, to move ahead and accept the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide preliminary engineering services for the downtown streetscape project. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Ordinance Number 46-2022 by title only, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide preliminary engineering services for the downtown streetscape project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $61,680, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Before we move with that, anyone out there like to make a comment?
I would like to...
Mr. Hanam?
One of, Katie made a, gave us a very well-thought-out proposal, including envisioning the entire downtown and the, in the streetscape. Not so much doing the design work, but doing some visioning as part of that. That is not included in this contract. How, I think that's a great idea. How can we accomplish that without... Well, I know we want to move forward with this contract, and I know we have some timing, but how can we make sure that that visioning step gets done?
Katie and I discussed that when we met a couple of weeks ago, and I'm in full agreement with that. You can't design, it's just the limited two-block area. That might be our goal for the spending of the capital money that we're getting from the federal government.
Right.
But we need to masterplan the entire downtown, just as we did with the downtown masterplan. So I don't think Mr. Aller's had an opportunity to go back to DGL, or probably hasn't heard from him yet. But that's going back to them with the requirement for that, and we'll get a new price, and we'll have to bring that change order to the city council.
Yeah, a change order, and maybe it just involves, again, it's mostly a visioning process. Maybe it's just a change order involving Edge a little, a little more to expand that scope, and that would be, but I don't want to let that fall through the trap, through the cracks here.
Absolutely not.
And I'm glad to know the mayor agrees with me on this, and, you know, that's, I think that's an important part of this. So I'm prepared to move forward with this legislation, but I will be looking forward to a bit of an expanded scope in some way to address that vision issue. I'd hope we could do that sooner rather than later, that it doesn't hang out there too long. Make sure we get that into the, into the mix.
Absolutely.
I get it. Okay, and I know we got to get moving on this.
Edge is a vital part of this.
Right.
We need their number as well, which is part of the DGL number. DGL needs their number.
Just so long as we're all on the same page on that.
We are.
I'm comfortable we can make it happen.
Don't want to design something that's short-sighted.
Right.
Too small of an area. You know, is there anybody who would like to have a comment before we move ahead with this legislation? Mr. Hanam, thank you for your clarification. Mr. Richardson?
I think we have a motion in the second, Mayor.
That's right. We do have the motion in the second. I stopped it. All in favor of the motion to accept this proposal from DGL Engineering and approve Ordinance 46-2022, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and Ordinance 46-2022 is approved as an emergency measure. Thank you. You're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Don't feel obligated. The next one does discuss a Main Street improvement south of the river, just to hire some engineering work to begin work down there as well. No, it is in the next item. The next item is six. That's for Safety City contracts. Then we'll move on to the other engineering projects. So with that... Mrs. Brining or Chief Snore, who would like to present these Safety City contract issues?
You got it? Doesn't matter.
Basically, update for, list of all the staff. All, I believe, all of the teachers are from Sylvania School. The L is... Creation dollars covers all the...
And this starts right out, right after school is out for the summer.
We'll have a week.
And back at Maplewood Elementary School. Always a popular program. I know you've had it on social media for several weeks that you, the spaces were going Township also has a safety town. Sometimes you trade back and forth when people can't make mornings or afternoons or vacations. Any questions for the chief? We're fortunate to have the number of almost volunteers. We're signing contracts with them, but this is hard work. That's a lot of, lot of time with the youngsters. Mr. Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 48-2022 and read by title only.
We've completed those. Possible amount, one hundred and seven dollars. The local public agency project, asset. Other means...
Mr. Aller, refresh our memories, because we've got a lot of road construction going on. When, will this one be happening?
Um, enter sewer level work.
Got two questions for you. I was driving in downtown Toledo last couple of weeks, and I noticed Jefferson Avenue has a brand-new bike lane, installed two-way bike lane, and it has a little bit of a concrete berm that divides the bike area from the rest of the street. Patient, probably a different street width, number of different factors. But I was curious if you'd seen that, or, and as you're planning and looking at the schematic design for the street, whether there's any additional protections or anything that might be possible for the bike lane beyond a pink street?
On Main Street? That's an interesting idea. I'm just not sure it's right for Main.
But we don't... That we...
And then my second question was, just, I think, to help us all keep every, all of the different street projects straight, and help being able to make sure we understand the scope of everything. Will we have an opportunity to see the schematic design before it goes into further design development or construction documentation, just to be able to see some of the early directions
Other questions for Mr. Aller?
Mr. Aller, I drive by that same Jefferson Street bike lane every day, and interesting concept. I don't know, I, when I looked at it, I specifically thought about where we might do something like that. It wasn't immediately obvious to me. I'll just, I'll just say that.
That's the right area. Jefferson Street's a different animal we have.
There's no further questions. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Ordinance Number 49-2022 by title only, accepting the proposal of Manic Smith Group for engineering services relative to the Main Street reconstruction project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $107,652, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Okay. And moved... And moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 49-2022 as an emergency measure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 49-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight, this is concerning Savania River Trail Phase Two bearing seat repairs in the elevated sections. Mr. Aller.
Yes, our attention was called to a section. Have offered a proposal. Look at those things. Did not have this. As always.
Kevin, who did the original design on this? Your sentence here, that a site visit was conducted on April 15th and it's been determined that the elevated walkway bearing seats were designed and constructed in a manner that has led to premature deterioration of seats to the JJR issue?
Can be a.
So have we advised some of this concern? Do we have a strategy for addressing this issue long term?
Definitely.
I don't.
This is the second problem we've had with their design work.
Yeah.
Pursue.
Okay, but it's on the radar.
We'll be reaching.
Should have repose, yes. Yeah, yeah, we've done some preliminary research on that.
When was this contract likely?
Well, we're beyond the actual statute, but I believe it meets the criteria to extend the statute to ten years based on the statute of repose, so we're going to be, it's going to be interesting.
Nice lawyer problem.
Yeah. Yeah, so once we get the.
Kind of thing we have money on.
What we talked about was waiting to get DGL's recommendations and then, once we know the firm numbers, reaching out to JJR.
Okay.
Kevin, let's start at the top, at least the way my thought process when I read this. In their opinion and yours, as professional engineer, is this walkway safe for pedestrian traffic, bicycles and like they? Okay.
I don't see.
I assumed that that was the case, otherwise you would have said that in the first line of the write-up, but I'm just trying to get that on the public record and, for the unwashed of the world, me included, what the heck is a bearing seat?
Bearing seat is bridge frame if you call the.
And the turnaround on this contract, for me, if the roof has a hole in it, you replace the roof kind of thing, so to me, this is, you know, we need to do this, a question. What's the turnaround on the report, because this is kind of critical timeline stuff, I would assume.
We didn't put any specific things in there, obviously.
Okay, thank you.
All right, this is a $7,800 contract to bring a different engineer in to help understand the problem and propose the solution. We have proposed ordinance 52-2022 to accept the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers. Dr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce by title only, ordinance number 50-2022, accepting the proposal of DGL Consulting Engineers LLC to provide professional engineering services, Savania River Trail Phase Two, elevated walkway bearing seat repair project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $7,800 and move for passage of ordinance number 50-2022 as an emergency measure.
Second.
And moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 50-2022 as an emergency measure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 50-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. You'll get back to us with report as soon as you've got it, I'm sure. All right, on to agenda item nine. Norfolk Southern's railroad's name was mentioned earlier as a participant and presenter at Safety City, but we also are going to be doing business with them on the Monroe Street widening project. Mr. Aller.
Yes, as part of that project. They have informed us that on excess of. Funds are there for this.
That railroad currently serves just the grain elevators north of Savania, just over the line into Michigan. For years, it's been speculated that that would end, that the railroad would be shut down, but that's, we're obviously not going that way. And then about five years ago, there was a proposal floating around that the tracks would be reinstalled to head north up to Blissfield from that location so that train traffic could get to the port of Toledo more efficiently than their current lines that go far west of Fulton County and do south and then come back to the port. I haven't heard anything more about that. That would have resulted in several trains per day as opposed to the much sparser use that that track gets now. I assume that the quality of the crossing is not changed, safety is safety, but what's being designed would serve either traffic. That is odd, this community has a experience with a median in the middle of a train track crossing down on Convent where a high school student, a classmate of mine, was killed in running into that center median and it was promptly taken out. I'm sure that all the most modern engineering is going, but it just seems like an opportunity for another crash. They were there first. As the historic marker says. Mr. Richardson, this is also yours, ordinance 51-2022.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce ordinance number 51-2022 by title only, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an amendment to the agreement for the preliminary engineering services with Norfolk Southern Railway Company relative to the Monroe and Silica Improvement Project, increasing the contract amount by $8,020, appropriating funds therefore, I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance 51-2022 as an emergency measure, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and ordinance 51-2022 is enacted as an emergency measure. Thank you, Mr. Aller. We're now up to agenda item 10, we've already done and voted on agenda item 10B, so we'll move on to added agenda item 10C, the Sage Yard update. Mrs. Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am passing around some information right now, but while I wait for each of you to get it, I'd like to just share with you that we're fortunate that tonight we have Brian Keizer here in the room with us. Brian is a longtime member of the Sage Yard Board and a representative for the City of Savania, currently serving as the vice chair, he brings much more experience to the Sage Yard Board than I do, so if you have anything to add, Brian, you certainly feel free to step up and do that. What you'll see coming around to you is the schedule of events at Centennial this year. I just thought it would be helpful to have an opportunity to take a look at all these events because it's really quite impressive. You'll see the gold events are the national shows that will be coming out to Centennial and then you'll see under the green area, all of the other events, so if you want to mark anything on your calendar, certainly if you want to buy tickets to any of the events, please do so, I think it's going to be a really wonderful summer. I think we should all be very proud of the work that Sage Yard is doing, their participation in all of their spring events are up significantly this year, I think we're feeling like that pre, the post-COVID timing here is bringing people back. I do feel like they didn't have quite as heavy of an impact as some other things because of the outdoor activities, but the numbers are really doing well this year, so we're really excited about that. Also, there's going to be some new turf going into the Tam O Shaner area and we also have some things, some funding from ODNR and some work will be done in Burnham Park in the not-too-distant future. So a couple exciting things happen on the Sage Yard front, I just thought it would be helpful to try and give you a small update each quarter on kind of things that are happening there. It is quite impressive, I know Marcus, having sat at the table, understands how fast things are moving there, there's a lot of activity, so I hope I can do a good job of getting you up to date and I invite any and all of your questions at any point in time. Brian, anything you'd like to add? Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that update. That brings us to the, are there any committee, any additional committee reports or referrals to be made at this time? Hearing none, we do have an information item A was an update provided by Mr. Sanford for the tax incremental financing or TIF in the downtown area. Mr. Sanford, anything you want to say about that? All right, thank you, there's no further items for the agenda and city council's consideration, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until its next regularly scheduled meeting two weeks from tonight on Monday, May 16th at 7:30 PM. Thank you all for attending.